2014. We have no upcoming meetings. I'm sure we do, just none that are noticed for me. And next, actually, I'm going to make a brief announcement. We have an addition to the agenda this evening. It's an executive session item. We don't normally add things at the last minute, but this just came up and it is time sensitive. So it's for discussion of a potential property acquisition and the executive session will occur at the end of the meeting. It'll take approximately five minutes, after which there will be a report of the executive session in open session before we conclude. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Kathy Layman.
Here.
Michael Illaquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. And I have no minutes to submit.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into our 15-minute public comment period, we're going to take just one minute and have a moment of silence to honor the passing of Billy Frank Jr. "Billy Frank Jr. was a selfless leader who dedicated his life to the long fight for the right of our state's native people," said Governor Jay Inslee today in a written statement. "He was a champion of tribal rights, of the salmon, and the environment. He did that even when it meant putting himself in physical danger or facing jail." And Kevin Ranker shared a quote from Billy Frank in January of just this year. "Good relationships don't just happen. We have to work together to build and maintain a strong foundation of trust and commitment to keep a relationship healthy and strong." Please join me in a moment of silence for Billy Frank Jr. Thank you. Okay, we're going to launch into our 15-minute public comment period. I've got a number of folks who've signed up here, starting with Betsy Pernato, Charles Law, and Leonard Lindstrom. You have three minutes to speak on any topic you would like to address the city council on today. Please introduce yourself, state your name for the record. You do have a three-minute time period, but our beeper isn't working, so at three minutes, somebody might make a noise or a gesture, but take it away, Betsy.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Betsy Pernato. I live on Alderwood Avenue in Bellingham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Imagine going to a nice restaurant with friends with plans for enjoying a relaxing dinner. Now imagine how you might feel if you went to that same restaurant and you had to wonder if the food was safe to eat because restaurants were only inspected if there was a complaint. Put your mind at rest. In Wachem County, the Health Department inspects restaurants on a yearly basis, not simply on the basis of complaints. Now imagine renting an apartment or house for yourself or your family, assuming the residence is a safe place to live. Then you discover that some electrical outlets spark when you plug in an appliance and you start to question the safety of the electrical system. Or your child has frequent asthma attacks triggered by the black mold on the wall of her bedroom because of an unrepaired leaking tub. Then you learn that rental housing is not inspected unless there is a complaint. But you've paid first and last month deposits and you're afraid of being evicted if you complain because you have no money to put up for another apartment if you had to move. That is the current system in place in Bellingham. We require restaurant inspections because foodborne illness can be deadly and we want the public to be safe eating in those business establishments. When we pay for a restaurant meal, we have the expectation the food will be safe. We deserve to have the same expectation when we pay for rental housing. Safe housing is as much an issue of public health as is safe food in a restaurant. Eating in a restaurant is a choice we make. However, we spend many more hours in our homes than we do eating in a restaurant, and the dangers we might face there can be as life-threatening as foodborne illness. Thank you to Mayor Linville for proposing a system of registration for rental housing and to the council for deliberating on this issue. I urge you to enact an ordinance requiring registration for all rental units in Bellingham with a small monthly registration fee for each unit. Before a system of inspection begins, the city needs to clarify for landlords requirements for safe, healthy rental units and needs to educate tenants about their rights. The goal of this ordinance should be a safe and healthy residence for every tenant. To that end, I support a higher inspection rate than offered in the current proposal by the mayor and his staff. I support the inspection of all rental units, except perhaps those built in the last five years, over a five-year period. In this way, no landlord would feel singled out and every tenant could have the peace of mind of living in a safe home. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
I'd like to acknowledge for the record, on April 21st, I made a statement to the council in regards to Alabama Street that was incorrect. Planning brought up the use of the 85 percentile speed as the gauge used to determine the speed, that 85% of the drivers drive less than on Alabama Street. So 15% of the people exceed that speed. The theory is that there should be a correlation between the speed and the speed limit. This allows 15% of the people who exceed the speed limit to be prosecuted by police. So let's look at the details. If we have 19,000 vehicles traveling Alabama Street daily, and that figure was according to planning, then we have, using the 85 percentile gauge, we have 2,850 vehicles driving over the speed limit per day. So what happens when 85% speed and the speed limit don't match? This would be for some engineers justifiable for a speed limit change, but this should not be the only case. The difference in the speed highlights a problem that should be resolved by either raising the speed limit, if that's appropriate, or by traffic calming the street. The 85 percentile speed gauge measures the signals given to motorists as to what is appropriate to drive on that road. If the 85 percentile speed is too high, it means it's time to change the signals. But putting a 35 mile an hour speed limit on a wide road won't work because the signals are confusing. So if you want a 35 mile an hour speed limit, the street should be designed for a 35 mile an hour speed limit with narrow lanes, crosswalks, pedestrian islands, and other calming devices. All engineers should realize this. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Leonard Lindstrom, followed by Dennis DeWitt and Rose Lathrup.
Good evening, Bellingham people. Leonard Lindstrom. I think we're getting behind on our riot control business. I think I need to get together with the mayor, see if I can borrow the police department for a little while, break out their Amwans, mount their bayonets, go out there and run all the troublemakers back to Lynn, and then build a fence around it. We'll have more peaceful business happening here in Bellingham. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Dennis DeWitt.
Good evening, Dennis DeWitt. I live in Columbia neighborhood, and I do have a rental in town. The rental registration inspection proposed ordinance is my topic. The council seems to be convinced we have a substantial problem with substandard housing in Bellingham, and I would suggest that in these times of limited resources, we should investigate what is prudent and productive in addressing this perceived issue of substandard housing. The problem, I would suggest, is with my minority of landlords, and I suggest targeting the problem rather than using a broad brush stroke to hammer everybody. A complaint-based system can work if the consumers, tenants, are educated. We could reach out to them. If there's a major perceived problems among student slum lords, reach out to the university. There are other mechanisms for reaching out to targeted populations that are being harmed. How does this council propose to create fair, readable rules with predictable results? How does the council propose to make a set of regulations that landlords and tenants can read and know if they are in compliance or have a valid complaint? I'm not talking about aspirational guidelines. The proposed regulations will not produce that result. The proposed rental registration and inspection ordinance is full of qualitative standards, aspirational guidelines, standards that are subject to the interpretation of the inspector on that day. You could pass the inspection one year, the exact same thing could fail the next year. It just depends on the inspector's interpretation. I've been there in other cities, I've seen it, and it is aggravating. There's no way to know if you are in compliance or if you have a legally valid complaint with aspirational guidelines. They're just a bunch of reasonable tests that anybody can pass, anybody can fail. They're like vagrancy laws. If you want to get somebody, you can. If you want to let somebody off, you can. To that point, RRI ordinance Paragraph 7 sets out the requirement to certify compliance, and it has several items. Item 13, the requirement related to fitness for human habitation as set forth in RCW 59.18.060, which has 12 items, and I'll just hit the points that I bulleted.
Time.
Alrighty. Well, if you look through that, all of them refer to reasonable test, reasonably good repair, reasonable program, reasonably adequate locks, reasonable weather tight. It's all reasonable. What's reasonable? Who decides? The inspector that day. So since my time's up, good, it sounds noble, it is noble, but good intentions do not produce good results. Bad law is worse than no law. I suggest the ordinance I read is bad. It's just aspirational guidelines, and much like vagrancy laws, we've sort of outrun them.
Thank you, Dennis. Rose Lathrup.
Hi, council. I'm Rose Lathrup. I live at 2713 McKenzie Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the waterfront. Take a deep breath. It's just kudos and encouragements. So first, we wanted to say that Sustainable Connections, where I work, we first started advocating for district-scale utilities in 2010, and at that time, we asked that the city import, dedicate staff, time, and resources to studying that further. And we are here to say thank you for all that you guys have done. There was a Public Works Committee meeting this morning that looked into the district-scale utilities and we're very pleased with all the work that's been done. The city Public Works and Administration has really dedicated top staff, the right resources, and they've put really great consultants behind the work, and it is awesome. We are pumped. So Alex wanted me to make sure I talked with my hands a lot because that's how I do things, but so let me just say, I am excited about what's happening there. It's really putting our waterfront utility, waterfront redevelopment on the map for sustainability, and that's a lot of what we talked about in terms of our citywide legacies, strategic goals, all of that is happening through this district-scale utilities. The eco-district work, it's all happening because the city is really putting the effort towards that. So we just wanted to say thank you for all of the work that's been done, thanks to Public Works staff and everybody that's pushing that forward. There's a few things that we wanted to point out that came out of the meeting today that we think are exceptional. First, it looks like the district-scale non-podable water systems will have a payback of as low as four years. Birdie suite, I think we can say that's a win. It may be feasible to reuse the existing storage towers from the former GP Mill site as storage for thermal water. The public has expressed desire to see these facilities reused where possible, and we applaud the creative thinking that achieves multiple policy goals. Freeman Anthony pointed out that the district's heating system might save about 6,000 metric tons of CO2 over the business-as-usual. What does that mean? It's hard for normal people to consider what that actually means, and that will be about 14,000 barrels of oil per year. So we can say that that is exceptional as well. So these efforts that are being made are real achievements. Let's see. And we really like the consideration of multiple delivery approaches. It may be smart for the city to develop these systems independently, or it might be smart to develop them in a public-private partnership. I don't think you will know without asking the questions, and you guys are asking the right questions. So we're just here to say thank you for all that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Rose. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Come on down now. And if there's anybody else out there, come on down and form a line behind.
My name is Elliot Smurf. I live in Fairhaven. I just wanted to quickly thank the council for honoring the memory of Billy Frank Jr. tonight. I wanted to thank Councilmember Murphy for letting me know that that would occur. I think it's important that we recognize how significant a figure he was to our region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teo Bickel, and I am the lead organizer for the Bellingham Campaign for Tenant Safety. It's an honor to speak here tonight on behalf of all of our members. Now, the Bellingham, Belling Home message is very clear, that if you pay your rent and follow your responsibilities as a tenant, you deserve to live inside of a safe home. Now, I think all of us can agree that unsafe properties out in our neighborhoods don't benefit anybody. And in the talks that I've had with many tenants, there are some very serious code, health and safety code violations out there inside of all of our neighborhoods. I've spoken personally with many tenants that have had code violations such as roofing collapse upon them, staircases collapsing underneath them, stoves catching on fires, and also many other serious issues. That's why we are so excited to see that there is a proactive code enforcement policy being discussed right now inside City Council, and we would just like to commemorate all of you for looking into this issue. And I have here a petition of over 500 signatures calling for proactive code enforcement of specifically having a universal registration system and also starting to have rental properties to be inspected to make sure that they're up to code. And I would just like to take some time and read off the petition. Tenants are put at risk by hazardous housing, negligent landlord oversight, and fire dangers. The current complaint-based system is flawed because tenants fear retribution if they bring a suit against their landlord, and many renters cannot identify structural or electrical code violations. We call the Bellingham City Council to adopt new city ordinances to require landlords to register their properties with the Bellingham City and require a professional inspection of each property to check for health and safety violations. We, the undersigned, are concerned citizens who urge our leaders to act now to pass proactive legislation in Bellingham to protect tenants. So in the coming weeks, when you're deliberating about what exactly a rental safety or a rental registration program should be like, please keep in mind that the fundamental purpose of a program like this is to protect public health, and that's where our aim and our view should be in. Thank you so much for having me and for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our public comment period. We're going to move into our one and only presentation of the evening. And it is a presentation by the Department of Health for the Water Treatment Plant's Drinking Water Week Award. The Washington State Department of Health will present the city's water treatment plant with a 2014 Drinking Water Week Award. This award recognizes the city's commitment to providing safe and reliable drinking water to our community, and I'll turn it over to Ted Carlson.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We're very excited about this Water Week Award. I think it's some very well-deserved recognition, and we have several folks from the Washington State Department of Health here today to help us with the presentation. So I'd like to ask Clark Halverson to come on up, and he's going to lead the presentation from the Department of Health.
Great. Clark Halverson, I'm the Director of the Office of Drinking Water for the Washington State Department of Health, and thank you for making time on your busy agenda today to celebrate Drinking Water Week. Drinking Water Week's been going on beginning of May for over 35 years, and it creates an opportunity for us to come together as a community and talk about the vital role that drinking water plays in a healthy, vibrant community as well as our everyday life. At the Department of Health, we've brought together a team of talented, passionate professionals, and as a group, we work hard to extend that team of partners and reach into the public water systems we regulate. We do this because we know what a big challenge we have in front of us, and it takes a team for us to be successful. With that being said, there are times when we have the honor to work with individuals that on their own make a big difference, not only in their communities but across the state. It's my honor tonight to recognize Bill Evans as one of those individuals by awarding him the Office of Drinking Water's Lifetime Achievement Award. This award recognizes Bill's 25 years of dedication to the City of Bellingham's water filtration plant. He's been a champion of public health and for maximizing the operation of the water filtration plant in a time of ever-increasing regulations by us and ever-decreasing budgets by other folks. In nomination of this award, PEG said, "Bill's a man who's learned about his profession from the ground up and demonstrates what hard work and dedication to the profession can accomplish." Bill's effectiveness has also been demonstrated in the honor the City of Bellingham's plant received. Your water plant is one of only 12 in the country to be presented the Partnership for Safe Water's 15-Year Directors Award, which is an incredible accomplishment. Bill has also been very involved in the Northwest section of our American Waterworks Association, where he has served as the President of the Operator's Subsection for many years. Our drinking water operators are truly the front line of public health protection for us, and we are lucky to have Bill be one of those on the front line for us. Please join me in recognizing Bill's dedication to providing safe and reliable drinking water by maintaining your water filtration plant for over 25 years.
Thank you, Clark, and Bob and Derek up there. You know, I got back from a two-week cruise. First of all, my wife would say not to give me the mic because I like to carry on, but anyway, I came back from a cruise and I found out from the Department of Health, from their PR thing, that they want to know what name to put on the plaque for the water treatment plant. And they said, "Well, it's a group effort. I'm not the only one that runs the water treatment plant. I don't want my name on the plaque." But they said it was a personal award, and I said, "Oh, wow. Who would nominate me?" But anyway, even though this is an award for me, there's still a lot involved in this. I mean, the support from the city council for all the things that I've been able to do at the plant, my boss and the Public Works Director and Assistant Public Works Director. So it's a group effort. But anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah. Hey, if you wouldn't come on up here and shake our hand. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move right into council's standing committee meetings, reporting out, starting with Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornham in his chair.
Thank you, Kathy. Today, before Public Works, Public Safety Committee, we had five items. The first was an update on fire equipment purchases. In January 2014, the Fire Department updated council on its plans to purchase six ambulances for basic life support use, and also an update on its research of fire boats. The agenda bill was prepared, was prepared as a pre-notification of action to be taken in the near future on these two equipment purchases. One, the city has obtained approval to utilize the Washington State Local Option Capital Assets Lending, or local program, and anticipates moving forward with the purchase of six aid cars in June of 2014. And the second item is the Fire Department plans to enter into a contract with Moose Boats of Petaluma, California, for the construction of a fire boat to be purchased under the 2013 Port Security Grant Award. Selections of Moose Boats was made through due diligence of purchase options from the GSA schedule, and this was for information only. They will be coming back with an ordinance relating to the purchase later on. The second item regards temporary street closure and opening for McLeod, McLeod Road culvert replacement. It's project number EV0101. The East McLeod Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project consists of replacing the existing deteriorating culvert for Baker Creek with a new culvert designed for Fish Passage. In order to facilitate construction, East McLeod is proposed to be temporarily closed south of Telegraph Road and opened west of Primrose Lane to traffic during construction. The project is expected, is expected to be completed in less than a month. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to temporarily close McLeod Road for this culvert replacement project. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
The next item was also temporary street closure. It's a temporary street closure for Chestnut Bay at Railroad, at Railroad Crossing for Bridge Rehabilitation Project. In order to avoid unnecessary loads on the bridge during construction of structural elements and reduce the overall project duration to six months, a reduction of approximately four months, the Chestnut Street and Bay Street intersection, along with portions of the adjacent streets, are proposed to be closed to traffic during construction. Chestnut and Bay at Railroad Crossing Bridge Rehabilitation Project consists of rehabilitating the deteriorating L-shaped bridge with spans, which spans the BNF SF tracks. The bridge deck will be ground and overlaid with new pavement, and the expansion joints will be replaced. When it's been ground down, the reinforced steel will also be inspected at that time, and any deteriorating pieces will be replaced. Once completed, the posted weight restrictions will be removed. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to temporarily close Chestnut Bay at the Railroad Crossing Bridge for this rehabilitation project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
The next item was a resolution to maintain adequate revenue streams for operating expenses and debt repayment of the Public Trust Fund loan. The City of Bellingham is a potentially liable party for the remediation of Cornwall Avenue landfill site pursuant to the Model Toxic Control Act. The City, Port of Bellingham, and Washington State Department of Natural Resources. In order to finance the city's share of the cost of the project, the city is applying for a loan from the Public Works Trust Fund in the amount, in an amount up to $4 million at a rate of 2.55% over a 20-year term. The attached resolution is a requirement of the application. It's anticipated that this $4 million will cover our share of those costs. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass this resolution to maintain adequate revenue streams for operating expenses and debt repayment of the Public Trust Fund loan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
The last item was the waterfront, waterfront utility master plan district-specific utility study preliminary review. The preliminary results of the district-specific utility study have been delivered, and staff presented the initial findings regarding economic feasibility, development strategies, and models. and models. Preliminary staff recommendations were provided for discussion. Freeman Anthony presented some of the results relating to three specific utility districts: the District for Non-Podable Water, District Energy, and District Hydro. The full report should be coming shortly and will be given to the full council after a review of it. If we have questions, they will be coming back to the committee again if we have additional questions. This was for information only. It was a very good report. Some of the preliminary results look very promising, so I'm pretty excited to read the full report and see.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that's the end of our report.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, next up is planning with Jack Weiss, Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. This morning, we had one item in the Planning Committee. It was a work session on a draft ordinance to establish a rental registration program. This is a result of a number of years of work on coming to this point, and on April 7th, the mayor had proposed a draft ordinance to the council. It went to the Planning Committee two weeks ago. We had our first work session. Today, we had our second work session. At the work session today, we discussed a number of different things over the course of ninety minutes, and we came to these conclusions and motions that came out of this meeting. One was to direct the staff to provide the committee with some cost options associated with the proposal, with some variations associated with the rate of inspections for the audit inspections. They would include a low, medium, and high type of projection. There was also another proposal that the staff will work on, which is based on complaint inspection that would be considered as people would see the exterior of the unit in a condition that might trigger an inspection based on a complaint. And that's being brought forward, and I believe is being used in Tacoma right now. So that's another option that would be considered. We're also talking about the possibility of having pre-inspections as a educational tool. That would be a hold harmless type of inspection, where people could get information through technical assistance from the city prior to a program starting for registrations as a means of trying to work with property owners. And finally, there was a request to come up with ballpark numbers for what a registration fee might look like on a monthly or annual basis. The other things that there was a consensus on the committee to look at as amending the ordinance had to do with changing the ordinance to offer free inspections for the audit inspections, and the details of that to be worked out, but in essence, to have these initial inspections to be free instead of charged as it's currently proposed. Also, to register owner-occupied duplexes, which currently is exempted, and to register the units that are associated with the Housing Authority, both the government-owned buildings from the Housing Authority, but also the Section Eight certificates that are out in the community, to have those also registered. Additionally, there was a proposal to change the way that the registrations were distributed to the units and how they would be posted. And finally, there was a consensus to change the timing on when the city council review would be of this program, if it passed, to be triggered three years from the date of the last batch of registrations. The registrations would come in different batches, and once the last batch would be the deadline for the last batch would happen, that's when the three-year trigger would occur. That was in order to allow for enough time for the program to ramp up and to get some good information about the condition of the housing stock in the community. We also discussed that we would recommend to the full council that we would have a public hearing on this ordinance, and that we would meet again based on the results of the work that the staff would come back to us with on some questions that have been posed to them, that we'd meet either in two weeks or in four weeks. And so that was the report from today, and I believe, Michael, you had something that you wanted to discuss as part of this?
Sure. Thank you. What I guess I want to say is that the way this registration program was brought forward, unfortunately brought forward with it a huge informational vacuum to the most important aspect of the program, were simply not included the materials from the administration to the council. There was no specificity or even a range given on what the fee structure may be, which led to a lot of speculation, some of it very inaccurate, and there was no specificity on what the inspection checklist would look like. You know, we said over a year ago we wanted to focus on, you know, a key set of important health and safety issues. That wasn't brought forward either, and so that information vacuum has led to speculation there on what exactly the self-certification of the registration would consist of. I think this is going to create more problems the longer the vacuum is there, and so I listened to the committee today, and I appreciate the focus on registration, but I think that information vacuum needs to be filled, you know, relatively soon to end speculation so we can get down and actually discuss whether or not a proposal is a good idea or a bad idea, rather than discussing things in the air. So, and that's my comment, and I hope you get to that soon.
Yeah, you know, we are asking for some financial informations, you know, at the next meeting that the staff reports back on. And the other part of it that I failed to report out is that the self-certification also was requested of the staff to bring back at least an example of what they're looking at. Doesn't have to be exactly what they're going to propose, but just the level of detail and the scope of what those declarations would look like, that we would be able to see that so that not only we would feel comfortable with it, but also the rental industry would also look at that and understand to what extent we are looking at this program at. So, with that...
Anything?
I think...
Yeah, Brad Heinrich, Mayor's Office. I just wanted to, the first part of Michael's question, I think if you, going back to what Mr. Thomas was talking about this morning, and I think we did get direction today on the cost issue, understanding the parameters, because it's very different in terms of what it might cost depending on the services that might be provided. So, as Jeff said, I think several times, if we go in the direction of things like pre-inspection service costs, if we increase the number of audits that are done, that is going to drive the cost forward. In fact, one of the things we talked about was, within that range of that audit inspection, what would trigger additional FTEs to be added to the program? So I just wanted to point that out, that I think we got that direction today, and we will be coming back, hopefully sooner than later, on some options on the fee schedule, but in addition to an example of that checklist as well.
Thank you.
So that was for information and end of committee report.
Great, thank you, Chad. Next up is Finance and Personnel Committee with Michael Lilikwitz, Chair.
Thanks, Kathy. The Finance and Personnel Committee had two items today. The first of that was a request to amend the 2014 library budget to delete one position and create a new position in its place, and reallocate the cost savings to support a new position. If we pass this ordinance effective June 1st, the department manager one position, which is actually just the Assistant Library Director, will be deleted, and a Communications, Community Relations, and Programming Manager position will be created. The savings from this change will be reallocated to support the work of the new position. So the fiscal impact of this is zero dollars and zero cents. This afternoon, the committee recommended, and by the way, the Library Board also supports this staffing change. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended passing the ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the 2014 library budget. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
The next was proposed amendment to the 2014 adopted budget to increase expenditures to call $380,000 of qualified energy conservation bonds. This will need a little bit of explanation. Back in March 2011, the council approved a bond ordinance for the issuance of qualified energy conservation bonds in the amount of $6.5 million. These were special bonds that are, through a federal program, are dollars to the city that were very low cost to us to implement some citywide energy savings and upgrades. These funds were used to implement citywide energy efficiency projects at twenty-two facilities. The projects include upgrades in existing lighting, heating, venting, and air conditioning equipment to reduce energy costs by at least twenty percent. The bond covenants, the documents for the bond, require that any unspent funds be used to call bonds. Calling bonds meaning paying it back. So this expenditure is really returning $380,000 of unspent money, buying down the principal and reducing our interest costs. This afternoon, the committee unanimously recommended to vote approval of this budget amendment, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the 2014 budget to increase expenditures and call on these bonds. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
And the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lake Wacom and Natural Resources Committee with Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, Kathy. Today is just an information only. It's a report out from the April 14th Lake Wacom Policy Group meeting. The Lake Wacom Policy Group consists of members from Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District, the Wacom County Council, the Southern Valley Community Association, and the Bellingham City Council. In the annual meeting on March 26th, we passed the Joint Resolution for Milestones to Hit for 2014 and Identification of Policy Principles Regarding Phosphorus Removal and Identification of Expenditures. So this meeting was moving how to move towards those goals, and the staff reviewed the TMDL phosphorus removal requirements, discussed the areas of investment, and presented on fifty versus twenty-five-year scenarios with the Lake Wacom. And the next meeting is May 12th, for anybody if they wish to join, and that was, if they're in less...Roxanne, did you want to order? Okay. And one additional thing for good of the order, I just wanted to say congratulations for getting the aquatic invasive species, aquatic invasive species boat inspection program launched, and I heard that they did a hundred boats on day one, so good job. Thanks for everyone for participating in that, and good job to Public Works. Thank you for that. And to committee.
Thank you. Next up is Community and Economic Development. Maybe that might be the first time we've had this all year.
It is. And if we had about a fifty-minute delay, I don't know what that means.
With Jean Knutson, Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. We had two items. The first item is a resolution amending the 2012 Housing Levy Administrative and Financing Plan. The 2012 Bellingham Housing Levy authorized over $21 million for seven years to provide, produce, and/or preserve affordable housing in Bellingham and to assist low-income tenants. The city council approved the administrative and financing plan on November 19th, 2012. An amendment is proposed that would increase funding for rental assistance and supportive services and broaden the use of funds to assist with interim housing and supportive services for those who are temporarily homeless and awaiting for permanent housing. Previous council action was ordinance 2012-6-033 placed on the Bellingham Housing Levy on the ballot, and the administrative and financial plan was approved by resolution number 2012-31, 2013-05, and 2013-19. The fiscal impact, the amendment would allocate an additional $75,000 per year of Bellingham Housing Levy funds for housing services for 2014 and 2019, and reduce the production budget by an equal amount. The total change in funding is $450,000 over six years. This afternoon, we had kind of a mixed recommendation, so I will move approval tonight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Michael.
I'd like to move to amend the housing plan to remove the $75,000 cost shift.
Is there a second? Okay. Michael.
I will not be voting for this amendment. I believe this is an extraordinary, excellent program. I campaigned for the home fund to be passed. I think it does excellent work. I also think that the $75,000 that's being shifted is to be paid for essential and necessary services. My objection is I think this is a very bad way of going around financing these particular needs. If we needed to find $75,000 for these needs, there are other ways and places within our city budget of over $200 million to find that $75,000. But what we're doing is we're setting a very bad precedent to raid a fund and to shift things around and to move away from a commitment we made at the beginning of this, which was to use seventy-five percent, three-quarters of these dollars, to new housing production. We already whittled away at that in a previous move, and we're whittling away at it again to reduce it now to seventy-one point seven percent. To me, there's no reason for us to be eroding the original commitment we made. It's just a bad way of doing it. There's other ways we could have found to pay for these essential services. I would have hoped that we would reject this, send it back to the administration, to come up with another proposal to fund those same services without having to change the plan and deviate from the original commitment we made to the public.
Terry.
Counselmember...
Yeah.
Lilikwitz, excuse me. To remove the $75,000 shift?
It's in...Terry?
Yeah. The $75,000 is going to go towards helping a part of the population who have nothing. Transition, helping somebody transition from the street into a house, putting a roof over their house where there is no roof. Currently, we don't have enough proposals to cover all of it, I think, to build additional housing, but I highly would characterize doing this to put a roof over some people's heads as raiding the fund. I think this is, I mean, there are a lot...Part of our presentation today showed that Bellingham has an exceptionally high poverty rate, much higher than the state average. We also have one of the higher rental rates here. We're looking at a population, young people who are starting out, trying to make it on, you got a job, you're not going to get more than thirty-two hours at minimum wage, you're going to pay almost seventy-five percent of your rent. To pay a basic apartment for a single-bedroom apartment, I, you know, I'm going to vote for this, and I cannot characterize this as raiding this fund. I'm sorry, but I think this is going to go to good use and still stay pretty much within the parameters of this.
Thank you. In our presentation today, the deficit was not $75,000. It was almost $300,000, and the seventy-five was going to make up a very small portion of that, and it is going to help people immediately. We cannot build places overnight, and we need to help people now. And if this gives us an opportunity to do so, then I say yes. And it doesn't sound like we are saying we're not going, we're not going to get to the end result. From our presentation today, it sounded like we are going to, but we have an opportunity to make a difference in many people's lives now, and that's what I will support.
Anyone else? One more time from Michael.
Just to clarify, my criticism is not... Just to clarify, my criticism is not towards the ends. Everything you have said, both you and Terry, is true. My criticism of the means to getting to that end. I think there are other means to get to the same ends.
Okay. There, well, I'm going to speak to the motion real fast. Sorry.
Wait, the president will get to speak.
There's a long buildup there while I think out loud. Yeah, Michael, I think I understand where your concern is, and I think probably all of us shared that initially when we opened the packet and read the concept. You know, we need to be very careful about public trust and how we use money we've asked permission to gather and spend. I, however, feel like this is a wise decision. It's about practicality and common sense for people in our community that need us to be able to make policy that impacts their lives in a meaningful way. You know, we're still going to have the money to build housing in the future. We're on target for those goals, and we received zero applications. So, I feel very good about this because the intention behind what the voters gave us permission to use the money for is solidly intact, so I will be voting for it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Jack.
Just a point, a clarification. While there wasn't any applications for production this year, there will be in future years, but the move that was being made under this proposal is $75,000 for every year.
Right.
Six years.
Six years.
It's, you know, it's kind of different there. And I guess I do, you know, I do concur with what Michael's saying in the sense of the means. I mean, I look and see what we have been, recently been doing to our other voter-approved initiatives, that we, we have been able to, you know, siphon off funds from Greenways, from the TBD, from the home fund in the past, and we use it for other purposes. And, you know, this one, I'm not, I'm going to support it because I truly believe that, you know, what Terry and Pinky have been saying, what you have been saying, Kathy, I agree with that. I also agree with Michael that the means, you know, the process of how we're doing this is, I wish that we could be doing it a different way, but I'm going to support it anyway.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the 2012 Housing Levy Administration and Financing Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes six-one with Lillikquist in opposition.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the 2014 HUD Action Plan. The 2014 Action Plan is required by HUD to guide the allocation of federal community development block grant money, better known as CDBG, and home investment partnership program, which is H O M E. Funds received by the city with the passage of the 2012 Housing Levy. Funding decisions are integrated in 2014 Action Plan process. The city announced the availability of funding opportunities through eight competitive notice of funding availability. Forty requests amounting to nearly $2.9 million in requests were received and considered. The Community Development Advisory Board held a public hearing and ranked all the proposals and has forwarded their recommendations to the mayor and city council for consideration. The fiscal impact is the 2014 Action Plan allocates CDBG and home funding $3,078,419. Housing levy funds $7,844,390, and city general funds of $447,256 to homebuyer, public facilities, housing preservation and production, rental assistance and services. Funds exclude existing and new commitments for reservation of funds for future allocations. This afternoon, Dave Stahlheim gave us a great visual report, and again, we had another mixed recommendation, but I'll move the resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
End of committee.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to reporting out from committee of the whole. Our first item this afternoon was recognition of two Bellingham police officers. Last Friday, two officers were honored by the state attorney general's office, and I'm going to share a little bit about who those two officers were. One was motorcycle officer Otto Brown, Bellingham Police Department. On March 5th, 1929, Officer Otto Brown suffered serious injuries when he was struck by a vehicle. Although he returned to work, he died 10 months later due to complications from his injuries. Through recent efforts of current motorcycle officer Scott Stewart, Officer Brown's line of duty death is recognized by the placement of his name on the Washington Law Enforcement Memorial in Olympia, Washington. And this happened on Friday in a ceremony with Governor Inslee. We also have a commemorative plaque of Officer Brown, and it will reside in the Bellingham Police Department headquarters. All five of his surviving grandchildren came to Olympia for the governor's presentation, including one from Alaska, and it was quite a moving description that Chief Cook gave us afternoon about that story. Our second honoree was Police Sergeant Don Almer, who received the State Law Enforcement Medal of Honor for valor. Sergeant Almer is recognized for his August 8th, 2013 actions during a high-speed pursuit and subsequent shooting involving two robbery suspects. Chief Cook gave a detailed description of what went down during that occurrence, including the above and beyond actions that Sergeant Almer took as courage and valor, and that also was quite moving. So, we acknowledged both officers this afternoon, and it was, it was really great, actually. Felt very good to be able to honor Officer Otto Brown as well. Okay, next item was, we had a presentation of options for rules to govern the use of our electronic communications up here and the devices that we use during meetings. Our policy analyst, Mark Gardner, gave some options to us, and we recommended option two, and I guess I so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting option two to govern our use of electronic communications devices during meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, and then our last item, I believe, this afternoon, was presentation on our new council materials management solution. Nicole Oliver from IT came and gave us a presentation about the new way that council materials are presented on the city's website, also how the videos function embedded in the website with our council packet information. So, it's a lot more user-friendly. You can go to the website, click on any section of the meeting that you're interested in learning about, and the video that correlates to that section will pop up, and you can see what transpired as you're reading the materials. This project started in 2011 with a request for information, and a lot of staff time and effort has gone into getting us to this point. We now have these new website improvements. All council members have iPads, which some of us use more than others. Hopefully, we will all adopt savvy tech usage. And there'll be some additional archiving of past city council activity that will take place that will protect our information for the future. Also, I just did want to mention that planning commission materials are going to be moving over to that system as well, so that'll be very helpful. They go into a lot of intricate discussions of planning topics, and I think having the video embedded with being able to click into the description of what's going to happen will help with folks being able to follow along with that. So, we got a demonstration, and it was great. And if you're interested, I would go watch the meeting from this afternoon. That was it from committee of the whole, except we had a few items for all the new business, and I just wanted to make one correction, that I went to Fire Ops 101 training this last weekend, and I went with Local 106's political action chair, Steve Dwyer, of the Bellingham Police Department. In my correction, I messed it up. Darn it. Bellingham Fire Department with Local 106, and that was my correction that I then messed up. Oh, well. Anything else? Any other old or new business?
Oh, I just got a couple real quick. Carl and Wymer and I had the honor of reading the joint county-city proclamation at the Workhorse Memorial last Monday afternoon at noon. A lot of people were kind of happy that we only had 16 to six names. Well, that's 66 names too many, but there's been years past where we've had 120 and 130 every single year of people who just get up and go to work and never come home. So, it's always a great, the Labor Council does a great job with it, and it's always an honor to be there. And also, last Friday night was the Art Walk with Allied Arts. We were judging, some of us were judging, well, my wife did most of the judging. I have no artistic abilities at all, to be honest with you. And Kelly Hart did a great job with that. It was just neat to go around all the venues. Some of these kids, talk about art. I mean, it's unbelievable how they can do it at such a young age, so that was a fun event, too.
Thanks, Jean. Terry, did you have something?
Well, this afternoon, we had voted, I made a motion to ask the community-wise Bellingham to present to the city council their updated rail transportation report to come, to ask them to come in early June to present to us. And so, I, we voted on it this afternoon, but I don't know if we need to vote on it again.
Well, I don't know if we need to either, but we might as well.
Can I just ask a question? Would that be, I know it's committee of the whole, would that be in the afternoon or evening, or does it matter? I don't know.
Well, they were going to work with staff.
Oh, okay. That's right.
Probably be the afternoon. Be committee of the whole.
Okay, do we have a second to?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is to ask community-wise Bellingham to present their more recent findings in collaboration with city staff. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. I do want to note, Terry, that I had written additional item there. I just failed to say what it was.
We got it.
Yeah. Roxanne?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that last Monday also, Western Washington University students came together so quickly to create a march and a rally in support for diversity at Western, and this attracted 700 students, all showing their support. I was so grateful for the opportunity to speak at that event as a member of the Nuksek Indian Tribe, but also joining forces with so many people from so many different cultures that were also speaking in unity for support of diversity for the college. That was just a great thing to be a part of, and I really want to commend all the Western students for pulling that together.
That's great. Thank you. Jack?
So, I'm on the technical advisory committee for the airport master plan, and while we were meeting more often a few years ago, it, for the last 20 months, we haven't met at all up until last week, and it had to do with the fact that the FAA was reviewing and negotiating with the port staff and the consultant associated with a number of different things. So, we ended up meeting and getting, I, things are going to move a little bit quicker now. We met associated with some facility issues at the airport itself, and we'll be meeting again on May 28th to both have a technical advisory committee and also a public meeting to receive public input on noise issues associated with the airport. And the announcement specifically where it will be coming forward in the next couple weeks, but it'll be on Wednesday, May 28th.
Great. Great. Thank you. Anything else? Pinky?
I just wanted to have a little update on the Energy Working Group. I talked about this earlier, our status in the Georgetown Energy Prize. There was a press release in Washington, DC on Earth Day, and Bellingham was accepted. So, we are going to go ahead with our second part of the application. We're going to work together with Sustainable Connections, Puget Sound Energy, the mayor's office, and Public Works to get that application completed, and that will be by June 30th. We're also going to bring on an intern from Western, so we're quite excited about that. And then, our next step was, they will tell us if we've been a finalist on September 30th. At that point, we will have to develop an energy plan to work towards a two-year prize, which will start in January of 2015.
Great. Thank you, Pinky. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move into the mayor's report with Brian Heinrich.
Danden. The mayor's appointing Cheryl Russell to the mayor's neighborhood advisory commission. She represents the central business district. She's, Mayor Kelly's also appointing Richard Sawyer as a Wacombe Falls primary representative, and Jeff Cook is the alternate representative. Kay Riddell will be appointed as CEO and primary representative, and the mayor is reappointing Dick Conneboy as a Samish primary representative. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I think this is a good time, as good as any, for us to adjourn to executive session, and then we'll return for consent agenda. So, that'll take about five minutes, and we will be right back. Um, so, that'll take about five minutes, and we will be right back. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, uh, and report out from our executive session. We had just now an executive session to discuss a potential property acquisition. Direction was given, no action was taken. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move through.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes seven-zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill two-zero-three-eight-three, an ordinance adding a new classification to the E-Team Salary Plan and amending the 2014 budget by adding one new position in the Police Department, Police Dispatch Operations Group, where no additional appropriation is required in the Public Safety Dispatch Fund.
Move third and final.
Second.
Jean Knudsen?
Yes.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillikquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornamond?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven-zero. Agenda Bill two-zero-three-eight-nine, an ordinance granting Noel Communications, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain telecommunications facilities for the transmission of telecommunications in, through, over, and under the rights-of-way within the city of Bellingham.
Move third and final.
Second.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Lillikquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
Aye.
Terry Bornamond?
Aye.
Jean Knudsen?